Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, December 5th. It is now 6:03 PM. Town council meeting is a joint pre-budget meeting with the school committee. Jay, will you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a municipal discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, nurture the bonds of community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman Lichardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
On behalf of the school committee, Chairman Cologne, Vice Chair Randy Pootu, Susan St. Amen, Joseph DiMartino, and Angela Fulp. Quorum for the council is declared.
There's no need for a quorum for the school committee, correct?
They have one.
No, you don't have.
They have three.
No.
Well, I'm not sure.
I doubt it.
I'm just trying to clarify that the school committee doesn't need a quorum for a joint meeting.
I don't think we've had them in the past.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Hi, Kristen, how are you?
Good evening. This is our annual statutory meeting, meeting the requirement that the state of Rhode Island says that the school and the town should meet in exchange of very preliminary revenues and expenditures for the next upcoming budget year, which is fiscal year 2025. So I sent to you guys what I have for preliminary revenues, factoring in a 2% on the levy. Kind of analyzing some of our revenues and how they're coming in now, made a couple of upgrades, but I'm gonna have to watch a little bit closer as we go further into the fiscal year 24. I did change the school state aid number just to acknowledge what they ended up getting in fiscal year 24. I put that as fiscal year 25 because we don't know what they're getting for 25.
This is a silly meeting, actually, because it's statutory required.
It's very statutory, yes.
However, it does say pre-budget, so budgets aren't completed yet. It's
Very preliminary.
We're not halfway through the year, so it's kind of silly to have to do this, but it is required, so we're here.
Exactly.
I wouldn't put much stock in any of the numbers that we hear here tonight, to be honest with you. Nope, so. Just, that's me as a recovering accountant saying that, so.
And me as an active one.
Thank you.
School. A couple of things about your.
Good evening.
Karen, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Just like Kristen just said and Mary Beth, you know, where numbers that Joe will talk about in a few minutes are very preliminary. We're in the middle of our budget build right now, so we don't even have a budget, a final budget yet. And as Kristen said, we don't ever know our state aid number. That's an ongoing problem. The cycle is just off. So, yeah, I'll just let Joe come up and say what he needs to say. But I'll just add that, you know, we're, as always, committed to working and partnering with the town. It's one town, one overall budget that we're part of, so, you know, our commitment has been evident, I think, through the years, and we're just committed to that moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know. I could just say ditto. We're really, we're really in the middle of the process right now. Like you said, the state aid numbers, we don't know now. I don't think we're gonna know right up until the point where we have to do our referendum.
Joe, where was your state aid for 2024 versus 2024?
2024, it was, I'll tell you that. It was $3.5 million over what was adopted. So, total state aid. I'd have to pull that out for you to tell you exactly what it was. I just know the difference offhand. We did get the increase that we were hoping we'd get. Say we're gonna get that next year in fiscal '25? I don't know. I hope so. Right now, where the budget stands, I'm still working with department heads. I'm still working.
What did it say there? What did it say?
But at the point of time today, our budget stands at $76,600,000 at this point in time. That number's gonna fluctuate up and down as I continue to go through with the department head.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe or Karen?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, school committee, for being here. No. That being said, I just see the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll be going right into our town council meeting. Just give us one second. All set?
Ready whenever you are.
Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, December 5th. Town council meeting is a town council. 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island, is now 6:09 PM.
Roll call again, sorry. Councilman Lichardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
And Council President Goslin?
Here.
Quorum is declared. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from November 21st, 2023, regular town council meeting, and request from the tax assessor for cancellation of taxes in the amount of $8,207.40.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinances. Amendments to the zoning ordinance to address recent housing legislation.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Al?
I'm requesting that that be tabled until March 4th. We met last evening with attorney Salvador, who's preparing the work. She has prepared the first draft of the the change in the zoning code required by the legislation, and is working on the changes in the subdivision regulations. The project is monstrous. The zoning code, there's probably 50 pages of changes that our legislature has decreed. With it, we met yesterday about working with Munich Code. She appeared before the planning board and gave an overview to the planning board of how their role is going to change dramatically. For example, in the past, if you came in before the planning board for development, but you needed some variances for height or setbacks or special use permits, the planning board said, okay, subject to zoning board. You went to zoning board, zoning board said, okay, and you went back to planning board. Under the new legislation, all of that stuff that the zoning board used to do now will be done by the planning board. So the planning board has a monstrous learning job ahead of it. Marilyn and I both have worked with it, and in all honesty, neither one of us feel comfortable enough to sit down and, you know, I'll say, give a lesson to the planning board. So, we discussed it, and what we would like to do is we're putting off the changes in the subdivision regulations and the changes of the recommendation by the planning board to the council until March 3rd. That will give attorney Salvador ample time to finish a product that is satisfactory to her and to get it to Marilyn and I to review, and so satisfactory to us. Question was asked of me last night, what happens if we get something that is filed before we have our ordinances in place? And my response is that what will happen in that situation is Marilyn and I, or the zoning, or me in the case of the zoning board, will have to take the application and bring it, study the statute as, or statutes that apply, and operate under the state law. State law goes into effect January 1. Whether we have a zoning ordinance that is totally in compliance or special use subdivision regulations that are totally in compliance, we're under the state law. So, I wasn't concerned with that because that's the way we'll operate. Al and I both felt that we would be much more comfortable in having a product that has not been rushed through just for the sake of meeting, sake of meeting an arbitrary date of state one and not having a proper job. So what I'm asking the council to do is so we don't have to get into a whole new set of publication and advertising. If you table it to date certain, March 4th, then we can just, Sarah can just put it on that calendar.
Looking at the calendar for 2020?
Yeah, I think it's March 5th is the council meeting.
The council, whatever that. So if you would just table it to that date, then we can come forward to you and Marilyn, myself, attorney Salvador, if necessary, and give you a presentation that we feel comfortable, we know. I've spoken to Mary Beth about a matter that I requested today to January 2nd calendar. Things that are just, we don't know where we're going. Right now, there are many, I don't want to give you a number, many, many cases where people have to come get a special use permit from the zoning board. The new statute says if we do not put in our definition an accurate description of every one of those special use permits, they can have it automatically. So there are a number of communities have taken the tack of, we're just not gonna allow any special permits. We're changing our zoning code to deny all special use permits until we get the code in order. So I'll be coming before you in January with that ordinance. But this is, this is a project that all the planners, a number of attorneys, all have requested. What's the rush? Put it for July 31st, July 1st, and the answer is no. So, we're stuck with it. My attitude is we're gonna be under state statute, so let's have our ordinance and our regulations done properly and not just to get it in place for the sake of getting it in place.
I think it's important to note that attorney Salvador is working for many communities, not just West Warwick. And it's an attorney that we found out about through Rhode Island Housing.
Yes.
And actually, we are not paying for attorney Salvador.
Rhode Island Housing is picking up $100,000 that the town would have had to pick up. I had talked with another attorney who's doing, who's doing it, and she was talking about $127 an hour. I can tell the board that when I thought I might be able to tackle the job, I took three paragraphs in the regulations, I spent eight hours and really wasn't happy with what I came up with. That's when I spoke with the manager and said, I gotta look for somebody who has experience in this field. The time it would have taken me to start from scratch would have been ridiculous. And here is someone who worked on the original template and the fee that Rhode Island Housing, I don't know whether it's all going to her or who it's going to, but they're picking up a fee of $100,000 that the town would have been looking at.
I think the other benefit there is that other communities will have similar ordinances to West Warwick, so there's some strength in numbers if and if we run into an issue. So, I would like to amend my motion then to table this until March 5th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you.
Moving second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Al.
Right. Business licenses. Request from Jason Silveira doing business as Rhode Island Auto Repair and Salvage for a junkyard license at Zero Canister.
Move the license.
Second. We want to just move both?
Well, I think Al might have some conversation on this particular one.
All right. Hold on one second, Jay.
I sent council the report last Saturday. In my report, I stated that I had requested for the applicant certain information that I still don't have. Because of the timeframe on Saturday, I did a report to the council. What I did was, because I was concerned about getting it to you, I looked at our ordinance and then I looked at the statute that what was the statute that provided for our ordinance. And my report was based on that. In my report, I gave my reason for feeling that the council could not prove this application. Once I had sent that out, then I came up Sunday and I've had some time and I got into much more detail. What I found out was that in 1960, state legislature passed the Enabling Act for the we got our ordinance under. While I felt that my opinion on that was that to follow that act, this particular application, while I fully don't know exactly what it's gonna be, assuming it's a junkyard, would not be granted. When I had the opportunity to do more research over the weekend, I realized that in 1960, legislature passed this Enabling Act. Then in 1985, based on the President Johnson, Johnson Beautification Program, they passed an additional act. That additional act said that instead of coming to the town or city for a license, they had to go to the Director of the Business Regulations for the license, unless they had a license already under the prior act or they had a license prior to 1966. So my opinion now is, and these statues, like so many of us, have a conflict, and I'm just giving you my opinion of reading the conflicts. But since this Enabling Act, giving the town authority to issue licenses, was in 1960, and in 1985, they said you have to go to the Director of Business Regulations to get your license. I have to assume that that's the license that governs. In addition to the same reasons that I gave you in my memo why I why I don't think the license can be issued, there is a real tough one that in 1985, they said in order for a license to be granted, there must be a minimum of two acres of land. So, I just wanted to update you on my, why I feel that this is a situation where unfortunate town can't grant the license.
So my question, like I brought up last meeting, was, this was brought before municipal court and suggested that this individual do this. So, Jay, I know you're here. I don't know what more information Al needs, but maybe you can answer some questions if he has any. What, right now, what's down there is basically customer cars and some of his own personal vehicles. So, I don't know if he's transporting, and Jay, you can answer these questions, if you're transporting for salvage or if you're just transporting for repair. But what can that land be deemed for? Because when you drive down both sides of that block, that's all you see down there. You've got auto body shops loaded down there with cars that are sitting there wrecked and whatever, and they don't have that license either.
I understand that. The problem I'm faced with is that when I look at the statute, the statute says minimum of two acres. I, you know.
But Al, this is what, you know.
I understand. I think the answer is that.
So this is a common factor in this town, and unfortunately, when somebody receives a complaint, they go down and address that complaint like this, and they look just at his lot. They don't do this. Because to the left, to the right, to the north, to the south, it's all around, the same type of businesses.
I have suggested to the building office that there are more complaints should be issued.
But I don't think that's the way it should be handled. I think that.
David, I would like to say yes, but.
So I'm not saying guess to a junkyard license or whatever, but because it's, I don't feel it's a junkyard.
The question was whether you need, why you didn't.
And that was the question.
The truth is.
I can't, I'm not in a position to advise him as to what he should come forward to. I think that, you know, he should.
But we as a town, our court system recommended him this. Not us, not you, our court system.
I.
So, I'm at, so that's why I brought it up last time. It didn't make sense to me, and I understand you did a lot of research on this. I just, whatever business, and Jay, you can clarify what you're doing there. I think it was most of your letter that, what you're doing there, so, but.
My advice to him would be that he seek somebody who has knowledge in this area as to, he may not need a junkyard license. He may need some other type of license. But I, as the attorney for the council, can't give him advice saying you should be seeking this. That's not my, I don't mean to say I'm on the other side, but I can't be advising him as to what he should do and then come up and say.
But you're not advised, but our court system advised. So, at this point.
From what I.
We advised on what should have been done, and whether or not it was a recommendation or whatever it may be, I'm just questioning that. I mean, I could have just kept quiet last time, probably would have passed, no problem. But again, it's not, you look, you drive down there, there's gotta be six or eight of that type of business going on down there.
I agree with my.
So I think what you're saying is that it's not a town issue, it's a state issue.
Yeah.
However, and we've had these discussions, we've gone round and round. Wouldn't the town want to have this business registered?
Yes.
So we should be seeking him to register his business in town, not give a license and pay the fee associated with it?
If you do that, I ask you not to ask me for an opinion.
Okay. So I'm asking the question.
Well, I would.
And we've had, we've gone round and round. A lot of these things, we shouldn't be given licenses, and we talked about.
I accept that, but the problem is that the 1985 statute says you can't do this without a license, and you can't have a license unless you already have one from the town and you also have two to three acres. Now, I was in the position.
So nobody would qualify in town. There's not, I don't believe this one.
The previous two junkyards that are in town would qualify, but since they've shrunk down, they wouldn't qualify. And they've shrunk, so even if you were grandfathered in, well, since 1985, those ones, those junkyards have shrunk under two acres. Okay, so either they sold off land or whatever, so realistically, there's only one junkyard that fits the criteria of over two acres.
Yeah, I, however, the fact was that the act said if you had it before 1966, and I only know of one that did, if you had it before 1966, you're okay.
Even if you're less than two acres? Because I thought you said and. No, it's.
Because you've had it. If you had a, if you had, in 1985, if you had a license from the town, you're okay. If you didn't meet either one of those, then you gotta come to the Director of Business Regulations, and here's what you gotta follow. Now, I think, you know, again, it was, to me, ridiculous with the legislature to do that.
So.
I mean.
So I certainly don't want to see, we're not looking to put anybody out of business. That's not what the goal is. So we need to find a way to rectify and work with the state or whatever to make sure that we can, not just in this instance, but in others.
Okay, and I will ask again, that, only because the question may become, come back to me, is saying, you know, what can they do it? I can't be the one to say to you, this is the way you can let him get around us. And I don't mean it the way it's gonna sound, but I can't say to the council, if he comes in this way, we can get around the statute. And I can't say to him, if he does it this way, we can get around us.
And we certainly don't want to get around.
Let me ask you, Al. He is a registered business in town, Rhode Island Automotive.
Yeah.
Okay, that Rhode Island Automotive is on, off Providence Street.
On Providence.
It's on Providence Street. But those cars that are there are part of that business, is that?
So I think we need to do, it's not fair to talk about this, I think. I think we need to get together. I think you and Mr. Silveira have to get together, or.
I would suggest.
He get counsel.
That he gets counsel.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think that's the reasonable way. Let him get counsel, and then I will feel free to discuss with his counsel.
Perfect.
Or I don't feel free to, you know, maybe it's my old school, but
So.
I don't feel free discussing with him situation and then have him innocently say, well, you, I understood you to say such and such.
I would move, I would move that item H1 be tabled and can't be to a period certain, or I guess we could, and then just address it again. Doesn't matter if it's period.
My advice would be to table it, have Mr. Silveira, seek some counsel, and then let the council advise him as to to do what he should do. By your tabling it, you are not putting a black mark on his record
Nope, not at all.
that it has been denied.
Nope. So I would make a motion.
Never, it's like he's gonna start from scratch and come in with advice that I can't give him.
We gotta set a date for the table.
Yeah, we should set a date.
Well, he's saying, no, we don't need to because there's no.
We can't be tabled and let go for a year or so.
No, I, no, because my feeling is that let's, let's say he gets counsel and counsel says to him, you don't want a junkyard license, you want this stoplight. Now you're bringing back a junkyard license. So, if the council comes and says you need a junkyard license, the council can file with Sarah and ask that it be removed from the table.
So.
If the council says you need some other kind of license, he can file a new application for that particular type of license.
And are we splitting hairs instead of tabling if we just say we take no action tonight?
That's fine.
So I would make a motion, we take no action.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's still eligible to operate.
Yes, yep.
Thank you for your time, James.
Thank you.
Request from Evolutionary Sports for an event license for an event to be held on December 10th, 2023 at 71 Manchester Street.
Move the license.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on this license? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
New business. Proclamation declaring November as Family Court Awareness Month.
Due to timeliness, we were.
We gotta move.
Move some proclamation.
Second. Moving second. Mark?
We were contacted by a member of a Family Court Awareness Month Committee looking for a proclamation to join, I believe, 14 other communities that have done this within the last two weeks and the rest of the state, which is doing it a little bit later due to their reaching out. But essentially, they're asking for a proclamation for a Family Court Awareness Month. And I'll read through it quickly. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAMC, is to increase awareness of the importance of family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse. As well as childhood trauma, coercive control and post-separation abuse. For judges and all professionals working on the case within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid evidence-based. Treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety effectiveness, effectiveness and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals. On evidence-based, peer-reviewed research, such research is critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. And now therefore, the West Walk Town Council hereby declares the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month.
Like next November or last, last month?
This one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you for reading that, Mark.
Resolution establishing a school building committee for West Ward Public Schools.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Mark?
Again, obviously, we spoke briefly in the past about the need for a school building committee for. What we're calling the West Ward Public School System twenty twenty-three project. The Rhode Island Department of Education provides guidance on who, how that committee should be constructed. And this ordinance is just the formality to create that and list the members. Under the bride guidance on who should be on it, to include the school committee chair, the school committee secretary. Superintendent, the town manager, school department director of finance, the school department director of property services, town building official. School principal. So we require two town counselors, school committee. And the school department have already selected a community member based on their awareness of education. And the West Ward Public School System will also need a community member with architectural, engineering and construction background experience. So essentially, we need two council members. If we pass this resolution tonight, that would be great. And then in the near future, as soon as possible and practical. Identify another member of the community with that area of expertise and get them appointed.
Would we just want one more community member? But is that, is that.
At a minimum, that's a requirement, yes.
And then with that, that's a state requirement with the architectural, engineering, construction.
Right.
So we might have trouble finding more than one with that experience, but.
I think, I think your question was, could other people be involved? And there'll all be open meetings. They'll all be. I, I think we talked about, we should have joint meetings, uh, updates at least quarterly and maybe more frequently as time goes on.
This is something we would have to appoint if we, like we would appoint to a board.
That's my interpretation. So that particular person will fill out, will fill out the board and will have it publicly appointed.
Far as the town council goes, I am currently on the building committee. Council feels, but I'd like to see Mary Beth and myself.
No, I did respond, Marks, and put that out some time ago.
I didn't respond because I was already on the building committee. Hold on. Does the council have any problems with that or any concerns or something?
I don't, I couldn't commit to something else, so anyways.
No, I'm asking if you have a problem with Mary Beth.
No, of course not.
So we just need a nominee, we would need a.
The second name.
We would need nominations of us two from the council.
I'll nominate, uh, Councilman Williamson and Council President Goslin to serve. On the building committee representing the council.
Second.
The only thing I ask is that after we, after the meetings, if we could get, you know, we're going to have another council person here, so three of us to. Should be, have some knowledge of what's going on, so.
I would almost recommend that it be a standing item on the agenda, and if it's a nothing, it's a nothing, but.
Even if it's every other meeting.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that we also take minutes of this meeting and so. And minutes of a meeting, so we'll, we'll, we'll provide those minutes.
And, and the school is really driving this bus, no pun intended, but I mean, th- they're, they're sort of, uh, ride. Puts them in charge of making sure we follow all of their procedures. Um, but yes, that everything will be posted. And as I said, I think it should be a standing agenda item and it might just be, we don't have anything. But that way it never gets, it never gets missed, right?
That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Now, as far as. So that's established. Now we're still waiting on the community member. Uh, to be determined. I, we have two community members already. Dr. Chris, Christopher Black is on this list also. Community member with the architectural, engineering, construction experience, I think we're trying to.
So I think we should actually put a call out, let people know that, that please submit applications, post it. There's a vacancy, what the criteria, and you might have an, an actual description that Bride has, maybe? Okay, so.
When are you looking to meet, Karen? After New Year or?
You actually had a, you put a, you put an RFP out on, on the eighteenth and the nineteenth and the twentieth, yes.
Any, any other comment on that?
And, and I would like, yes, yes. And again, they, these meetings are open to the public, they'll be posted, it's all, all those requirements.
Just like to make a suggestion, um, the town manager noted that Joe Spagnu, as the director of finance for the school department is on the committee. I would suggest that the town council consider having the town finance director on as well. It is a joint initiative, so I think that would.
Clearly Kristen will have to be involved, because as we get to a point where we go to a bond.
Exactly, that's why.
Have impact. I, I'll leave that with a, and, and maybe time, maybe. You've had a conversation.
My consideration on obviously being involved at the appropriate time and then I just, I don't know if we needed to hurt another.
And, and that's fine, and that's fine. I just. Yeah, and, and I'm fine with that. I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that it, it is, there will be a need for both finance directors to be involved at a point.
And just a clarification, did your vote just now was that for the two council appointments, you still need to go for the full resolution?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment from the council on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty command vehicle.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Chief, how are you? I'm very well, how are you? So, um, our current command vehicle is a, a twenty sixteen. Um, it's about eight years old and, um, it'll make a good reserve truck. It'll be replacing the twenty oh-five command vehicle. Uh, the vehicle that we've specked out, we've gone through the master purchase agreement with Ford Motor Company. To Taster to get a, um, an exceptional deal on the F-two-fifty. The other components with it will be a, um, a light tower. And, uh, as was in my notes too, that, um, the light tower we currently have is from nineteen ninety-six. Uh, it's on a piece of apparatus that after an incident begins, when we call people back. They have to get their gear, man that, and then it gets to the scene. And it's, it's usually later on in an incident. Having this on the, one of the initial vehicles, having a new light, um, will, will make for a more safe operation. And in addition, the other component to this, um, is a, a cap that, um, will go in the rear of the, um, bed. And will be able to be moved, um, if this, um, vehicle, the F-two-fifty needs to get replaced. That command component with the compartments and pull-out tray, uh, will be able to be moved to a different, um, pickup truck. Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
You saw that, you saw the good Christmas act last meeting, so you put this on this.
Discussion action, tax incentive exemption application for Tradesman Park LLC located at one seventy-five James P. Murphy Highway.
Move the resolution.
Mark?
So this is for discussion action. I believe we have representatives from the company here that can go into what they do. And, and their construction plans. Uh, but this is part of the tax incentive application based on ordinance that's currently on the books. That we believe has internal application with the review by department staff. Um, that's eventually submitted to me to verify that it fits the criteria of our ordinance that's in place. Um, I believe it's, although it's ambiguous on who has final approval, the ordinance kind of implies that the town manager does. Um, but since it involves taxes, I think it's important to present it to the council, uh, more or less. For a awareness and a, a rubber stamp, um, a checks and balance, even though we'll be providing an annual report. On businesses that, uh, participate in this program. Uh, but this one, we believe does fit the criteria. Um, the section that shows kind of lays out, just like our other ordinances for tax stabilization agreements on the. Breakdown of value and the increased tax payments. But I'll defer to the, the business representatives to answer any questions or explain what they're doing.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Thomas Santilli, twenty-six Star Drive, Narragansett.
Mike Martone, three five seven Congdon Drive in Wakefield, Rhode Island.
So you guys already started building.
Correct, yep.
So this is one of those type of situations that we had about a month, two months ago, so.
That being said, it's been on the manager's desk since October.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, just tell us what you're looking for. Obviously, we have all the numbers in front of us, but. Um, what, what more are you going to be doing? Just so the public is aware, what you're going to be building.
So, uh, we're constructing, uh, three, three buildings in West Walk over on Jamesy Murphy Highway. Um, two eight thousand square foot buildings and one ten thousand square foot buildings. Um, we, uh, we have a couple potential tenants that have been hovering around that are interested. Um, few of them would bring a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of traffic into the, into the city of West Walk. Um, it's, uh, the, the people that have expressed a lot of interest were like stuff for, you know. That would want to do stuff with kids, like a softball academy. Um, there's another, there's another gentleman that wants to do a, a, uh. Basketball academy for, you know, um, one-on-one training, AAU training. He, he wants to do some training for some disabled. Children also to kind of get their lives back on track. Um, we have a home staging business. We have a couple of, of really good.
We have leases now.
So you only have one building up now, right?
We have three buildings.
Three buildings up, yep.
They're not complete.
We wanted to get the infrastructure up before, uh, we hit the winter, hoping that, um, maybe the interest rates might, might drop. And we might be hitting it at a good time instead of hitting it at the bad time. So, uh, any help that we could get from the city would be appreciated on our part.
I'm going to correct you with the town, though.
Town, I'm sorry.
We're kind of, we're kind of sensitive about that, yes.
So, uh, I think we have, we have a great product, uh, great project. I've owned the property for, uh, since two thousand seventeen. I've sat on it for quite a while. We've, uh, we've done a lot of work. Um, we've done it all ourselves and we're hoping it's going to be a, a good win for. Everybody, for everyone.
Any questions for the parties involved? Any questions for the town manager?
No, I think if, if we can get, the more businesses we can get in here and alleviate the burden on, on residential properties. I think that's a very good thing, that the items, and maybe, maybe we can make some copies so people can see, um, the kind of ideas that. Uh, Mike and Tommy are presenting softball academy, basketball academy, personal training. Types of things that will bring people into, into town. So I, I, I think it's a win-win. Um, the value is, I assume that's what you're going to be spending on building?
We got a little bit over than two million into the project so far.
Okay, so.
Is, has, um, Tim looked at this, Mark?
I don't know. I, I don't believe so.
I would feel more comfortable in, in having our solicitor look at this before. I would agree to anything.
What doesn't?
I'm not saying that I'm not in agreement with what you're looking to do, but. But, um, I would feel more comfortable. So, it's only two weeks. You can look at it tonight.
Okay, I mean.
I'm, I mean, you guys can go how you want. I mean, I, I feel more comfortable having this solicitor.
I mean.
Why he's here.
I, I don't know that he's ever with any of them, to be honest with you. Just saying.
This is the actual, this is the actual.
This is the ordinance.
This is the ordinance.
Yes.
And it's, it's in place and, and actually, we've had this discussion that it doesn't even really have to come before the council. But we would, we've always said, since this has all been discovered, we said, at least bring it before the council. Mark's been having it on his desk since October. So I, I think it's fear that, I mean, I don't think they're asking for anything else for the last three that. Two or three that we've passed.
Yeah, I don't know, probably, is it possible to get this on the correspondence for the next, for the next agenda, just so it's on, or can you still add it retroactively to this?
I was going to add it under their agenda item.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you, that would be great.
Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not opposed, I, I guess I am opposed. I'd rather have, I feel safer having the solicitor look at it.
Three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, yes.
You can, if anyone, if you want to just leave them there on a chair or something, maybe somebody can take.
Um, consideration of rules of procedure for the West Walk Town Council.
No, you won't.
I put this on the agenda. And I put it on because I was asked to put it on by a ward five constituent, and we don't have a ward five council person. So I was, but the emails, and you're the closest one, so would you put it on? So that's what I did.
So Sarah and I spoke briefly about it. I think we both concur that it would be very beneficial to formalize. Some rules and procedures and protocols. Um, some examples were submitted as well as some additional research being done. So I think our, what I would recommend is that we take those, look at what's the best of them. Match them up to the requirements on our charter, because, you know, the various communities' charters are a little different. And then present them back to you for consideration. And if there's any other public input. On suggestions, we'll be more than happy to take it, um, to eventually present back to you, um, for consideration, discussion and eventual adoption.
Are you talking of, and I know I put this on, but I put it on word for word, how it was sent to me. Are you talking about rules at a council meeting? Or etiquette, or what, what do you?
Essentially both. I've only looked at, I've only kind of read briefly through one example and it did kind of cover all of the, all of those items.
But I assume we would vet it prior to any passage anyway.
Right, I mean, we want to make sure there, there are some specific things that, in the examples that the, that our charter covers differently, so.
Yeah, and I know, and I know we have talked as a council, as a whole in the past, that unless it's licenses or ordinances. We allow public comment, but on general con, general items, we wait for public comment for those items. And we as a council have discussed that numerous times in the past. Now, that's one of the issues that is being brought up, but. We as a council have decided that as, as a group over the past five years, if not longer. So, I mean, we could still put that in there and how we're going to handle that, we can, so on and so forth. But I just want to point that out that we have discussed that in the past. There's also, uh, items in there that say that. In the past, and the town council president sets the agenda also, which we've kind of gotten away from that. In the past, you know, past couple of years. So. I, I usually just let Sarah, I, I never really take anything off anyway. When anybody puts something on the agenda, I'm like, okay. You know, and I'll, I'll call you up on it or whatever and say, hey, what's this? So, you know, I've always asked you guys as a group, you know, hey, don't surprise me. Just tell me what you're putting on the agenda or whatever. So I've never dictated the agenda per se. I never said, don't put that on. So, you know, I've always let Sarah just run with the agenda and just post it. So she doesn't call me and go over, because Paula used to call me and go over every item. Now, I didn't go over, like she would just read it to me and just tell me what it was and I'd say, yep, yep, yep. And that was it. And I approved the agenda. Again, nothing's ever changed there except for why call me? Because I'm not going to take anything off anyway. So it's fair to Sarah to be able to get it done, especially if she needs it done by Wednesday and, you know, I'm getting tied up or whatever and stopping what I'm doing just to say, yep. But we can, we'll have this all put up together. Sarah and Mark will work on it and we'll bring it before the council.
We will need some input from you guys at certain times over, you know, you know, a lot of rules of procedure address public forum in the way that, you know, maybe time limits or signing up ahead of time. There's several different ways.
Every town does it different. There's some towns that let you sign up.
How you want to do that.
Yeah, there's some towns that let you sign up in the beginning. That's the only time you get to speak. There's some towns, you know, for the most part, we do, we let everybody speak. We've never set a time limit. So, I mean, here in the council chambers, we've never set time limits from the council. We've let everybody speak freely. The only thing we don't allow is the vulgarity and, you know, the belittling and whatever. But other than that, I mean, we've always been pretty fair with our community as far as what we do as a council. So if the council wants to set time limits or one comment only or whatever, that's up to us. But, you know, give Sarah your ideas. And Mark? Any other questions on that?
Discussion Action Issues and Concerns With The Property Located At 75 Plaski Street.
I put this on the agenda. I did speak with the owner of the property. And I put it on because I've had numerous constituents, it's in Ward Four, it's in my ward, calling me, emailing me regarding what is happening on at 75 Plaski Street. So 75 Plaski is like a field. It's a vacant piece of land. There have been people who have been putting tents up, bringing things onto the property, almost like setting up camp for the winter. So the owner is aware. I've had numerous conversations with him and also with the realtor who's trying to sell the property. And we can't sell it with people on it. The owner had already cleaned the property up, spent a lot of money cleaning it up. And he now, in order to do anything with it, has to spend his own money in cleaning up and again, the mess that he didn't make. So it's not my property. I can only see what everybody else sees from the road. I did make a few phone calls. I talked to Chief Verone the other day, who is, I guess, the point person for activity for people who have nowhere to go. So I guess with the owner who can't be here tonight, he has a previous obligation. I'm not looking to put anybody on the spot, but there's a question, the questions are coming to me that I don't have the answers for. So I'm not an attorney. So I did speak with a zoning attorney, Aldi Fiore, and it can't keep going on like this. This guy wants to either sell it or maybe he can develop it. Maybe he can put condos like across the river on Offa Street. Maybe he can do something with it, but right now he can't do anything with it. So everybody's asking me, what's going on? What do I do? You know, it's not right. So I talked to Al and this is kind of the procedure of way to go, way to go.
Jason spoke to me a couple of days ago and Jeff spoke to me today. There's a big distinction. Jason spoke to me about private property. Jeff spoke to me about town property. I will start by saying I will not touch any issue with town property. That's a whole different ballgame that I think lies strictly in the town solicitor's job because if it ends up with litigation, town solicitor handles it, I don't. So I will begin by saying all of my remarks are strictly related to private property. Unfortunately, I know that what I'm about to say is not going to be popular probably with the council or the constituency. But this is a piece of private property. Nothing the council can do about it. If he, that could be his family, then he's got out there camping. I look at it, it's the same way that if there was an apartment house and the tenant didn't pay rent, well, that tenant's a trespasser. Just like these people may be trespassers. He can't come to the town council and say, I got a, somebody hasn't paid rent. Can you get him out of there? Same way, you've got people, I've got people living on my property. Can you go get them out of there? The answer is no. It's your property. It's your obligation, even to the point where he would have to take whatever action is necessary to evict them, just the same way he would evict a tenant. And to go a step further as to the lack of town involvement, if he went to court and he got an eviction order, it would be the Kent County Sheriff, not the Westwork Police Department or anybody in the town that would do the eviction. Private eviction is private eviction. A number of years ago, there was an attorney, probably one of the most brilliant attorneys in the state, a guy by the name of Aaron Barberian. But he was a total nut and rewrote a lot of the law. And one of the things that occurred because of Aaron was he had a client who kind of didn't pay rent. So Aaron hired the moving people. They went in and they took all the furniture, they put it on the street. And immediately the legislature passed the Act of No Self Help. And that's what we have here. It's strictly up to the owner of the property, take the necessary steps to evict them. The only time the town can step in is if there is any type of crime being committed. And if there's a crime being committed, then I would leave that to the chief and the attorney for the police department to make a decision as to whether or not there's a crime being committed. But on private property, it really.
So Al, I have a lot of questions here and I've had a lot of. I've had a lot of conversation with Jay, either on the phone or via email on this situation. First eviction. Eviction would be if somebody is renting or had a lease with you and they're paying you money and stop paying you money or damage your property and you can evict. Hold on. Now, somebody comes onto my property and pitches a tent and I have no trespassing signs up. They are now trespassing. Now, the law doesn't want me to take matters into my own hands. So at that point, to me, I would have to call the police. And they would have to tell that individual. Now, if Jason and I packed our tents up on Friday night and went across the street from his house into that empty lot, I can guarantee you that the police would be knocking us out of there, saying, you need to leave, because they would call the police immediately and have us removed. Now, the last thing I think you're saying, it's not the police department's issue. And I don't want, you know, I understand that that's private property. The bike path is state property. A lot of people don't realize, they think it's town property, but it's state property. Okay? So at that point, keep the state out of it. Private property. You have, you come onto my property, decide to take, you're telling me somebody can come in my house, park their, on my couch and say, you can't remove me until I get evicted? Because I could tell you they're going out the window the hard way.
What I'm telling you is that whether you, whether we want to hear it or not, it's unfortunately not the town's jurisdiction.
Why is it eviction versus trespassing? Though that, I'm curious. So why eviction? Why, if you're on my property?
He can do what, I'm saying that in my, if he came to me as an attorney, I said, okay, let's go to the spirit court and let's get these people properly evicted. Then you take that eviction notice. You go to the Kent County Sheriff. You say the sheriff here, you go over there and you get rid of their tents and you throw them off the property because it's private. I know, I realize, I realize the position you're in. You want to help your constituents, but that doesn't mean you have to take care of everybody.
It's a timeframe. I believe it's how long. I think a certain amount of time.
I guess that's the question. What's, why the distinction? Why is it eviction? I never thought eviction. Because eviction, in my mind, you had some right to be there at some point in time.
I don't know the exact amount, but it's once they've established some kind of tendency.
Oh, okay.
Over a certain amount of time. And then, because I know that when you had that problem there a few years ago, I know you tried, you did help in that area and you helped them get places, but I know if you wanted to evict them at that point, they had been there so long. I think a professional here that maybe has some information wants to come up here.
I get that. It's been a long-term thing. But you said it was just cleaned up. For the back.
Yeah, people, I don't, same people or not.
I'm using the term eviction, but what I'm saying to you.
Is it's not our issue. I get that. We understand that. We understand that. Yes.
Your issue. And to ask the chief to go in there, I don't think he's got any right to, unless there's a crime being committed.
He took over property.
What?
That's a crime. You took over my property. You stole my property.
Let's, I assume that the chief would like to weigh in on this.
Good evening. With all due respect to Mr. DeFiori, I haven't spoke to him about this issue tonight. I haven't spoken to Mr. Lachardi about this. This is the first I'm hearing about this particular issue right now. Once I saw that it was on the council agenda, I actually reached out to our police prosecutor, our police solicitor, and we spoke about this. We're confident that this is nothing more than a trespass. This is not an eviction-type process. I'll be glad to speak to the property owner because I've never spoken to the property owner or the realtor or anybody in charge of the property. And, you know, it's our understanding, this is a trespass and we would handle it just like any other trespass on private property. Not public property, but private property. In most instances, the police would have to get a written statement from the property owner or the property manager. The owner would be ideal. Once verified that they are the property owner, we could at that point issue no trespass orders to the people on the property. Now, clearly we're sensitive to people that are unsheltered. We're not just looking to kick down tents and drag people off in handcuffs. That's not our style at all. We don't want to get involved in that. We've also taken the extra step with Chief Verone and Wendy. And we've gotten some people and some services offered to the people on that particular property, starting last Friday, over the weekend, and yesterday. So we're particularly sensitive to that, that group and unsheltered residents of Westwark because they are our residents. What I think we've been able to establish is that we hope to get them to voluntarily leave that property if the property owner wants that to happen. We'll also give them a decent period of time to vacate the property, which I've never spoken to the property owner. I don't think that that property owner would have an issue. We're trying to work with them. We will formally trespass them from the property, actually give them a no trespass order, give them X amount of time to vacate. And at that, at the end of that time, whatever time we agree on, if they choose not to leave that property, it very well could lead to an arrest. We hope it never gets to that position. We're using all the resources that we have available, including our mental health clinician, homeless advocates here in Westwark and statewide, to offer services, offer shelter where possible, to help ease the pain of these people who are unsheltered Westwark residents, vacate the property on behalf of a property owner, if they want that to happen. I've never been contacted about this particular issue, but I am working with Chief Verone and Wendy from the heads.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not speaking.
We didn't have it happen, but Coventry had it happen in the Home Depot parking lot. They pretty much told everybody, you're trespassing, get off the property on such and such a date.
And it is a particularly sensitive issue. It's not, it's not your typical trespass which happens when, let's say, for example, somebody goes into a store, they get caught shoplifting, they don't want to press charges, they want them trespassed from the property. We do that. If they come back, they get arrested immediately. This is a little bit more delicate of a situation and we're willing to walk that line. We hope that we can, you know, mediate that prior to an arrest. That's what our hope is.
I may have misled what I was saying. I said earlier that if there were a violation crime, then as I said, that would be his. That I, I was just talking about Jason Comey. What could the council do? And I don't, I don't think this is anything.
We would agree.
I understand that.
Yes.
And this is why I put this on the agenda because there's so many.
That was what I was trying, I was.
Yes, thank you.
We've been getting emails, not just from different residents as a council.
Different areas, yes.
And from that area. And I think Chief Verone has been very good with answering the questions and, you know, the neighborhood is getting concerned. So obviously, we're getting the calls. There's nothing the council can do, but we can bring it to the attention of the authorities. But we can also guide the resident to reach out to the chief's office and say.
But it's out there and this is the way to go. Because as you know, everybody has questions, everybody, a lot of people have questions, they have concerns. People don't know the path to take. So, and I was unclear myself. So this is why I put it on the agenda. It's out there. This is how to go. I will get the owner of the property, I'm not speaking on his behalf, and I'll get the owner to contact you if he chooses to.
Absolutely. Well, I think, I think it would be great if the property owner contacted me regardless of whether or not he wants to do something, doesn't want to do something, wants to go halfway in between. Because I want to be responsive to not only the town council, but our residents and our property owners, as well as our unhoused citizens, our unsheltered citizens. So if the property owner, if you could ask the property owner to contact me, so we can have a one-on-one discussion and that way we can, we can kind of keep everybody's interest, you know, at the forefront and do the best for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or Al? Thank you, guys.
Appointment of Westwork Town Council Member for Ward Five.
Before I move the name, I would actually like to thank, I'd like to thank Tammy and Mark for allowing us to have the time to go through the process that we've gone through in the last 10 days. You guys have been terrific. I appreciate it. I think we did what we needed to do to put it out there. And that being said, I very enthusiastically moved the name of Mark Dennison to Appointment of Ward Five Council Person.
Second? We haven't voted yet. We haven't voted.
We didn't vote yet. Yeah.
Second, my second. Discussion. Again, I know I made it clear last time I had an almost three-hour sit-down with Mark. Other members, other people did show interest in it, but they, some withdrew because they knew Mark put his name in. So I had a discussion with Mark. If the council votes yes tonight, on December 19th, we'll start at 5:45 and he'll have his swearing-in with his family here. And then he'll be up here on the podium with us. So any other comments from the council? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a congratulations. Yes, he is. Bert, behave over there, will you? And yes, he had to replace a Republican. No, Mark will be up for reelection less than a year from now. So if he decides he likes it and he wants to run.
Yeah, I wouldn't put the cart before the horse there. Yeah.
Congratulations, Mark.
Would you like to say anything? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Come up to your first microphone.
Yes. You probably should identify yourself and where you live.
Mark Dennison, 56 Pine Orchard Road. Thank you for the time you've given me and the consideration you've given me. I, this is not a campaign speech at all, but I pledge to work with everybody here and do my best for the people in Ward Five and obviously for the town of Westwark. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. Twenty-two years, that's nothing for you, Bert, right? He's a newbie. Yeah.
Upcoming appointments.
Sue, are you sport or review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term? Sue, are you sport or review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term? Westwork Housing Authority, Appointment To Fill A Vacancy For A Five-Year Term, expiring November 2027. Tax Assessment Board A Review, Appointment To Fill A Vacancy For A Three-Year Term. And the Juvenile Hearing Board has two appointments or reappointments for a four-year term.
Public comment?
Just state your name and address for the record.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Kevin O'Connell, twenty-four Sydney Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. I've come. Good evening.
Hi.
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
Come to address the problem at Pulaski Street, but not only Pulaski Street, entire West Warwick. As you well know, it's become an epidemic in West Warwick throughout the state of people camping. On town property, um, private property. Uh. Disastrous effects, as you saw at the gazebo, as you can see on Pulaski Street, if you ever been by there, I don't know if anybody's walked the property, you've been near there. This trash from the bridge till the eye can see. Tense, tense, tense. Now I was wondering, I said, I thought we couldn't do any camping overnight in West Warwick. So I called the town clerk's office the other day and I says, I'd like to get a camping permit. And the girl was very courteous. She says, uh, there's no camping in West Warwick, sir. I said, really? So she says, yes. I says, okay. So I says, is there an ordinance preventing me or something? Is there a law? So she says, I don't know. So I said, how about structures? I says, I said, on Pulaski Street, they built a structure with wood tops and all that. She says, I'll send you over to the billing inspector. So she sent me over there, talked to the nice young lady. She, I told her the problem. She says, uh, yeah, there's no overnight camping in West Warwick. Says, matter of fact, she says, we took a person. Uh, in West Warwick to court, in municipal court, a couple of years ago because they allowed somebody to park their camper. On their property overnight and they slept there. And somebody complained and they brought the person to municipal court and they paid a fine. I said, okay, under what law did you bring that person to court? She says, I don't know. She says, but there's no camping in West Warwick. So I says, well, let me call Parks and Recreation. They do all the. I called Mr. Caldwell the other day. He was very gracious. He says, no, there's no camping in West Warwick. There's no permits. So I says, well, I said, that's for everybody, right? So he says, yeah.
No permits or no permit process?
Well, he says, I, I don't think there's an ordinance, but he says, I know there's no permits. We don't issue pits, permits for overnight camping. So he asked me my concern. I told him, I says, yeah, they're camping all over. The newest one is Flat Top Pond, which I believe the town owns. They're there now. So, problem's getting worse. It's going to be infested with rats pretty soon because if you saw the garbage on Pulaski Street and everything, that's coming. We're, we're waiting for it to infiltrate my neighborhood. Already they've infiltrated the neighborhood. Peeking in people's garages. I have to close my garage door during the day now instead of leaving it open. Because they stand at the edge of the, and they, they know the law. Here and see what's there and all that. Nothing I can do about it. Nothing the police can do about it because they're just walking by. My problem is, is that it's a simple problem. If there's no overnight camping in West Warwick, is there an ordinance? Where we can't get a camping permit? It, or is it just a foregone conclusion that you can't camp in West Warwick? I, I don't know.
I don't think there's a permit process, but I, I've never heard there was no camping in West Warwick. I know you can't. There is an ordinance in place and I don't have that in front of me, but you cannot be living in your camper in your backyard. Maybe in January, that might change, but um, as of right now, I know you can't have. Your camper in your backyard hooked, hooked up to water and, and sewer and saying, I'm living there because that's. There is an ordinance in place for that because we, I, I know I dealt with that on Providence Street. Um, I, I don't have that ordinance. I can get that for you after we're back in my notes.
I'd appreciate it. Um, and also I, I called DEM.
But that's campers.
That's campers.
But as far as camping, like if you're camping in your yard or camping in your neighbor's yard or you have a sleepover and.
Yeah, but can I go up to the West Warwick Civic Center and put a tent there and?
I don't.
Stay there.
I don't know. Like that's, that's what I was, the conversation I had with Jay was, you know, can we, can we go across the street in that wonderful lot and go pop, pop. A tent up and, and sleep there one night.
Right.
You know? Um.
So why don't you give it a shot here?
I offer.
And if we can, you know, let's, let's encourage it. If they can camp, let's encourage it. Because, I mean, if people have no place to go, welcome to West Warwick. You can camp wherever you want. That, that's okay. I mean, that's okay. But I called DEM anyways because my real concern for Pulaski Street, the other day they were dumping buckets. Into the river. So I called DEM and he says, Mr. O'Connell, he says, if I showed you my computer, you'd go out of your mind. Okay, of all the complaints I got about people camping along the riverbanks and throwing stuff in the river. He says, we don't have the resources to arrest people. We don't have the powers. But he says, it's a big problem. He says, until the state and the local officials. Take this seriously, it's going to get worse and worse. And as you can see, Pulaski Street did. Summer, two people living there. As of today, fifteen. That's how quickly word spreads. That's how quickly it spreads. Now, they're, they're probably too crowded there. They're going to Flat Top. There's a big area back there. To camp. My problem is, DEM says, look, we'll go in there and clean it if we're authorized to. But he says, you know who we're going to bill? We're going to bill that property owner. I said, yeah, but he had nothing to do with it. These people just went there and he said, well, that's who's going to pay the bill. And he says, for a cleanup like that, you're talking about eight, ten thousand dollars. He says, because it's hazardous waste. We have to see if soil was contaminated. So that's a big problem. And my biggest concern is for the town of West Warwick because I grew up here. I live here. If somebody dies from a stabbing, an overdose or a beating. On private property, who are their families going to sue? They're suing the property owner because they think he's got deep pockets. Who are they going to sue in the town of West Warwick? People have deep pockets, the town of West Warwick and their insurance company. Maybe not your fault. But you know what's going on and the lawyer's going to say, you knew what was going on, didn't take care of it. So we're suing you. You're responsible. Even though the person may have died from an overdose or a stabbing. Or whatever gunshot wound, whatever, whatever they do. An accidental drowning. They're going to sue the town of West Warwick because you can't sue the person that gave them the drugs because they're long gone. They're gone. They don't have anything anyways. It's going to be the town. I don't want to see the town of West Warwick go through that again. It's, it's really crazy to think about, right? If somebody dies on the town property while we know that there's illegal camping going on. And drug use. Who is a good lawyer going to sue? It's us. You, me, every property owner will be paying for it. So I think, I hope we can do something. If there isn't an ordinance, maybe we should consider doing one where there's no camping in West Warwick whatsoever. No overnight camping. That would be a good thing. I mean, so a resident can't sleep in their backyard. Yeah. Probably neighbors aren't going to bother them anyways if they do it. But if we're allowing people to camp wherever they want. And riverbanks are very enticing and you know why, right?
The amenities.
Right. It, it's very polluted and they can dump their waste where they don't have to deal with it. Down the river will deal with it because it'll flow down river.
So they use it for bathing, boiling water.
They do, absolutely. When I saw them dumping buckets, I said, oh my God, this can't be good. All I saw them before was riding in and out on their bicycles and bringing paper bags and plastic bags and doing whatever they're doing. But when I saw them dumping Home Depot buckets into the river. That's, that's a big concern. I think you all agree with me. We don't want that in West Warwick or in the state of Rhode Island. It's not healthy. They're trying to clean up our waterways so people can fish and we got people destroying it. Maybe because they don't know any better. I don't know, but we, we got to take this seriously. We really do. Because it's totally getting out of control and it's an epidemic now. It'll turn into a pandemic. It will. So thank you for listening and I hope we can get this resolved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom, old Sixth Colonial Way. Mr. Kevin, we don't want it in West Warwick, Rhode Island or in America. Yet here we are. It is an epidemic with this homelessness problem. About thirty, thirty-five years ago, I was invited, Mr. Lefaria rings a bell in my head, invited me. To bring my Boy Scout troop up to where the memorial is and set up a camp. We did something like Old Home Days. And they set up a camp and it was to get kids involved in scouting and they set up, they were all prepared to do outdoor cooking. And it was going to be a four-day weekend for these kids and all set up. And the first night, we got shut down by the fire department. There's no camping in West Warwick. So my kids that had everything planned, we had to wing it and then they did another weekend down at Camp Yago. But that goes back way back then. And uh, Kevin, as far as the trash that was lined up, uh, the biggest majority of that was cleaned up. I was going to say earlier, today's Tuesday, maybe Friday. But very recently, they cleaned up all the bags that were strewn out all over the place. And I know Wendy supplies these folks with bags to try to keep their mess to a minimum. But somebody cleaned out most of those bags, the shopping carts and a lot of the bigger debris is still there. Um, but just to set people at ease, this gentleman that you spoke with. Can't remember his name, but I got to be friendly with him last year when he was cleaning up the last. Uh, encampment that was there. He went in and cut down all this brush. And, and he mowed it right down to clean the whole property up, couple of roll-off dumpsters to clean up what was left. But he told those people that they had to vacate because he's trying, actively trying to sell the property. And he gave them all the time they needed. He wasn't going to knock anything down. He says, but you've got to find a place. You can't be here. He gave them all the time they needed and they. Got out of there in a week or so. Then he had to go clean up all the debris that was left. So the guy's not, you know, a heartless monster. He understands. But he is active, actively trying to sell that piece of property. So I don't think he's going to go in and start tearing. Uh, tents down and, you know, shoving people off the property physically. He's, you know, very kind-hearted.
But it's still his.
It's his.
I mean, that's what I can't get past. It's, it's his property.
Right.
He pays, if it was my property that I pay taxes on and I'm losing say in what happens on there. Then that, that's, to me, that's not right.
Exactly. And there's a huge difference between.
I'm not going to speak for him. I've never met him. We spoke on the phone. He's an okay guy. He wants to do his best for the town, but it's still his property.
Period. There was someone on the other side that was dumping brush. And they came up, while I was there chirping with him with the dogs. They uh came over and says, hey, you've got a truck and you help me. He said, I got my truck stuck over here. And it was a truck. He says, this is my property. He was dumping. So he didn't realize that it was somebody's property. It was just there. So. He got the lesson that he can't dump there anymore. And this gentleman helped him get his truck out of the ditch that he had got himself into. So he's a kind-hearted gentleman. It, it's, he's not a monster. And uh, tha- that's one thing. I just want people to realize that he's not going to go in and pitch people out onto the street. They're not going to be sitting there bagging baggage on Pulaski Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
On that note, Jay. He pays taxes and he's having trouble getting them off. I was up at the last meeting addressing you about Riverpoint. We all pay taxes. This body doesn't own Riverpoint Park. We own it as taxpayers together. Therefore, it really burned me real bad when I was told I'm going to get a summons if I'm there after dark, right? We all pay for Riverpoint Park, not just one person, not just this town. This town wouldn't have any money without us taxpayers giving it to you. So the whole summons thing, I'm about this close to trying it. Because if I go there and I get arrested or I get a summons after dark, that's a civil liberty situation. I will go to the ACLU with it. This town needs to do something about this. This town needs to stop it. This is a safe haven for homeless. Don't know why. I just traveled twenty-six hundred miles and you don't see this like this. Okay, you don't see it like this. West Warwick is a safe haven. For what reason? I don't know. Maybe because the town doesn't have enough. I don't know what you want to call it to set the rules straight. But if there's no trespass, there's a no trespass. Doesn't matter who it is. No trespass, there's no trespass. There's not one to favor, three to favor. If it says no trespassing, the police department. Gets them out, not in ten days and three days and five days, right then, going. Just like if I trespassed, okay? I'm not homeless. I'm not a criminal. But if I trespass. I'm assuming the home, the, the property owner's going to call the police. Police going to come. Mr. Reed, you got to get off the property. We're going to charge you. No, I'm not leaving. Okay. I know what they're going to do. They're going to click it and I'm going to go to court and I'm going to pay a fine. What's the difference? There is none. I don't want to hear that they're taxpayers. I don't want to hear that they're citizens. It's all BS. We pay taxes in this town. We deserve to have a clean town to live in. And it's getting worse and worse and it seems like it falls on deaf ears. A hundred percent. You made a good point about the eviction trespass. Listen, at the end of the day, these people are making our community look like a dump. Okay, like I said before, the last time I was up here, there was leaves on the trees. Well, the leaves are gone. That's the camouflage. When I stand on my property and I look across the river now, I don't want to look at that. This ain't a cheap town to live in. People in this town pay a lot of money. We don't deserve what we're getting. In this body, in this town, everything in this building. Oh, well, it's a homeless. All we're working with has, I don't care about that no more. I'm tired of hearing that because you're watching other cities and towns. Across the country, putting their foot down and stopping it. If we keep inviting it, it's going to keep getting worse. Put your foot down, make it happen, stop the BS. That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bert, you can, you can yell from the crowd. You want to go to the new podium?
New podium.
Got him.
Hi, God. Kurt Mullahan, Mallory Drive. I came in tonight and I looked at this thing and it's beautiful. And that leather old board that we had, I thought there was some kind of a lore or some politician that wanted that old board. Papers used to fall off. This thing was always crooked and microphone. It's unbelievable. The town sergeant likes it so much. I have my love with it. I want to have the town clerk send me the bill and the town sergeant will pay for this.
Believe it or not.
Thank you, Bert.
West Warwick School Department and our West Warwick School of Children built that.
Hey, did they send you a bill?
No, they.
Part of their education.
Okay. No bill. Well, that's nothing.
It was a teaching moment.
Boy, it's beautiful.
It, it was part of their curriculum. It was a project that they undertook for us. It took a while because it got bumped a little and they explained that to us.
Chairs for you, Bert.
Yeah.
Our chairs, I, I hope our chairs will be here before Christmas. They're building them one at a time in North Carolina. And uh, US-made all the way around and they're uh, fireproof according to the California Fire Code.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you very much.
Be beautiful.
I'm sure they will be.
And if the mic was wireless, the chief and I would have brought the podium to you.
That, that's right.
Is that right? Next time.
Is that part of our reprieve?
True, but this thing is beautiful. It really is. And it's nice to be able to stand here and feel some real wood that's, that's, that's doing. It's gorgeous.
Thank you, guys. I don't know if it's on the other side, but there is insignia on this side.
It's on both sides.
It is on both sides. Yeah.
Oh, you got, yeah, I saw the town seal. That's great. That's great. Okay, hopefully our chairs will be here for Christmas, guys.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you, Bert.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Melissa Ferrara. I live on thirty-three Maple Ave. I have been here the last five town council meetings. Uh, the last meeting that I was at was on October fourth. The day after that meeting, now I've been here every single meeting requesting stop signs on Brookside Ave. Due to the very high traffic volume, the bike path, nobody stops. Everybody flies down that road. The day after that meeting, a pedestrian was hit by a car that kept going. Have the video right here for my work. My son takes this bike path. Have the video right here for my work. My son takes this bike path home almost every single day from work.
If you wanna, you can, I I've been David have seen it. Maybe you wanna bring it up if you wanna show Jason and Mary Beth. So this for the clarifying for the um, this is for the right on Brookside Ave, right now, right behind the West Warwick Manor. Uh, I know it did receive a negative recommendation from the traffic committee. I'd like to try to set something up maybe in the next week or so where maybe I could talk with. Members of the traffic committee and see if if we can find, I I don't wanna just put a stop sign in a random spot that could be unsafe. But I'd like to talk with them and see if we can set up a spot that they think we could safely put a stop sign. I know that typically the traffic committee does vote negative for any stop signs that are on straightaways. But I know in the past, including when me and Jason put a stop sign over on um. The one that became the four way stop sign over on Pulaski where Pulaski Street um and the daycare. So I'd like to try to set something up with the members of the traffic committee in the next couple of weeks to see if we can safely come to some. Way to put stop signs there where it's safe and doesn't interrupt traffic more. No, 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 I'm, they do, they do, they do, they do put them there, but the traffic committee will but will not usually recommend a stop. Right? They did not recommend it for when we put the one at Pulaski. I know there's one on the way, the one on Factory Street, which I've probably unintentionally ran a couple of times over the years because because. Right, um. But yeah, I'd like to try to set something up uh so we can safely potentially put some stop signs over there on that spot.
Yes, there are two.
There are, it's in Coventry and there's no, there's chemical.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, well, that's, well, that's spot.
And they do.
For whatever reason, people slow down at that spot. I don't know why, but I, I mean, we've talked about it multiple times.
So many.
And it was literally after the next meeting and that video and the guy got, he got hit. I mean, I was shocked. If you see the, I shocked the guy got, got right up and kind of, he kinda got up and bounced and went going, but it was crazy.
I think part of the issue is where the bike path is in the next stop sign are literally fifty feet apart.
So realistically, there needs to be a three way stop sign put there. There needs to be one on each end of Brookside and then the the.
Well, there there is one at the four corners, Brookside and.
Right, but there's not one on each end of Brookside.
Again, I don't want, I I want, I wanna, I wanna be able to do it safely with somebody that knows more than me about the proper place to put stop signs.
Which is understandable. This was a grown man that was on the bike path.
No, I.
If this was my eleven year old.
I saw that video, yes.
It would be very, very different.
There's a couple of spots that like that. One is not West Warwick, so it's not our problem, but the one when you're going down, West Natick, West Natick Road is a, no, no, I just. West Natick Road is one that always scares me when I go by there because people always fight, right? I know that's war, that's that's Warwick. That's not our problem. I don't wanna go too deep because it's not on the agenda, but I but I am gonna set up a meeting and I'm gonna put it on a future uh agenda. I'm probably at this point. It'll be the first meeting in January is what I'm thinking after I talk to them.
This is meeting five. And nothing's been done.
Well, that's not true. I think the the committee did meet, the traffic safety committee.
The first meeting I came to, it was in the works.
And they did meet and they made, they made a negative, they they recommended that it not be.
They did, they did, they didn't, they didn't put stop signs. They did.
Yes.
Um, I know they updated some of the repainting and that that didn't stop anything. I don't, I mean, I don't.
Nothing for me or that road.
And I think, I think, and Al, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, um, because we've had these conversations. The the general rule of thumb is that you don't police speeding and those issues with stop signs. And and that's a danger and a liability to the town if and when you do that. So that makes things in some cases more, and we have many examples throughout the town. Uh, it is Crestwood. We have, we have in Natick, we have a stop sign at every crossroad. Um, there were things that probably shouldn't be there, but over the years have um.
You're not supposed to regulate speed stop signs. However, I think that this is for, I'm not trying to give an opinion for traffic committee. But I think what what Jay is talking about is where you have a situation where a bike path comes to a street. That's not for the control, in my opinion, the speed. That's not for control of speeds. That's for the safety of pedestrians uh that if you had a crosswalk, sign said you must stop for pedestrians. I think that in again, if the if the traffic committee or major uh asked, major asked, asked me our opinion, I'd say, no. You can go ahead with that because you're not putting it up to control speed. You're putting it up for safety factor.
So that, I just wanna point out something. Everywhere the bike path except for Brookside, everywhere that the bike path enters a main road. It has some sort of traffic control device. For instance, right here, you've got a, the bicyclists or walkers have to press the button. It turns all the lights red. When you get down to Providence Street where it goes into Warwick, it has a red light there, stop sign for the individuals and a red light going across. So Brookside is one of the only ones.
I think we, I think we only have three that are technically.
Just ask, young lady just asked me if would it matter because of heavy traffic? Again, my opinion is no, because that would make it, in my opinion, even more necessary. If this is heavy traffic, we've got to control it somehow for those people on bike paths. Um, you you see more and more, you will see signs protecting the person in the bike path on a highway. So I I would not have.
So, oh, so we'll, so just to wrap it up, I know we will, we'll, we'll set up that meeting and tentative target date would be the first meeting in January. Um, but again, I wanna make sure that we do it in a safe way, that we're not causing another issue and causing another danger to the community as well by doing that, but.
And and maybe, you know, just having a traffic safety committee because they did, they did the work. We need to. Consult with them to see what the, what the reasoning was.
They painted both their lines on both sides and didn't even finish it up.
They would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be, the traffic safety committee wouldn't be the people that do it. But so, so I think we just need to revisit it. Mark, I don't know if you have any.
Only that if you wanna send that email to me or directly to Major Blaze to put it on their next agenda, obviously. Welcome to attend it and get firsthand information.
I already put a note on there. When I saw you in the audience, I put a note in there already, so I was one step ahead.
If you would copy me on the agenda, then I can follow up with the uh getting the details from them.
Thank you. Just so you know too, about the bike path though, it's, you know, when you, you get different people on the bike path. You have people that walk, you have people that you have kids coming home from school and you have the cyclists. And the cyclists, when they're, when they're moving, they're moving and not saying.
No, not everybody stops.
Not right, that's so, so just because if a stop sign happens to go up, it's, it's really not gonna solve it. It's gonna, it might help with, it'll help with the issue.
On the bike path, they'll follow their stop signs also.
Right, it's, it's a two way, it's a two way street.
But I will say, I mean, the one we put up at Pulaski, I I noticed a dramatic difference to to that one on Pulaski from what it was.
Oh, of course.
Five years ago, so it did help. Are people gonna blow stop signs? It happens. Are people gonna speed when the speed limit's up, of course?
But I also think it, we have to really look at that if we're gonna put this for, or consider putting this for the cars, we have to really look at the bike path as well. And may maybe do, maybe do some more.
Yeah, of Allah. I am just now the voice of Brookside.
I'll make sure I keep, again, tentatively, that first meeting in January, I have your number. I will keep you updated. I'll send you a text. If it is on there, definitely you can have anybody that's over there that's seen other stuff. The more people for that meeting, if you wanna come and speak, then.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Last time we talked, Maple Ave is finally paved and done, correct?
Yes, it is. Thank you, finally.
There's not four, there's not four, but you could do three. There's not a spot for three, yeah.
Yeah. But again, because the traffic safety committee has made a ruling, we should go back through them and and have a conversation with them.
I would not wanna do, I would not wanna do without their involvement, absolutely.
I left the right notebook at home. But I remember sometimes, uh, Tom Oates again, Six Colonial Way, just uh two quick items. Uh, about two months ago. Four, three or four meetings ago, this council was caught off guard. And totally surprised by something that slipped out from the sewer commission or sewer, the sewer meeting. About no brewery going in. And I thought that was a big surprise because as I recall, the tax break that they were getting was for the residential. But there was plans on big cake coming in from the brewery.
Tom, let me, I I don't wanna cut you off, but I'll save you a lot of time with that. We met with the owner.
Yep.
Um, the brewery is on hold because the the company wanted to start leasing. So they withdrew the brewery and restaurant from the plans so they can get their sewer permit. They are coming back with a plan date.
Perfect. I, that's what I was looking for.
It might not be a brewery, but we have made it clear that we want some, because, because of the size of the tanks and the DEM being able to allow what, where it was going to go. But Mr. Phillips was more than, we we toured it, we looked at it and basically said.
Thank you. Just looking for that update. And another update I see you have on your um. Executive session, the last item, Payon Street. Um, I'm hoping that soon we can get some sort of an update. I know it's being litigated.
Again, updated tonight.
So when will the 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 owners of the property, the taxpayers get updated? Will that be very soon that you?
I don't know what it's gonna.
We don't even know what tonight's gonna bring us.
It's all about. So when we find that out, we'll let you know.
Yep, we're eagerly awaiting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Palazzo, Fire Robin Lane, West Warwick, and I've got a couple of items as usual. With regard to the uh school building committee. I uh was very intimately involved with the construction of Wakefield Hills as an observer and a taxpayer. And Mr. Goslin, your predecessor way back when, when I was criticizing that school. And I was saying it would cost over ten million dollars. He stated this, despite what Mr. Palazzo said, I still have it in the data banks. That school will be built for ten million dollars or it won't be built at all. I stopped calculating when it reached twelve million. I'll just leave it at that. The school was built under something called design build. When usually construction projects like that are built under design bid build. I would caution that you make sure that is not the case for this new school. Uh, the senior tax exemption freeze, whatever, where do we stand on that? He's not here. He he went out.
He went to the back. Here he comes. We'll wait for him to come.
All right. How long have I been talking about this? We're almost two years.
Okay, this question's for you.
You're the target.
I'm good.
Excuse me.
The senior tax freeze exemption, where do we stand with that now?
I spoke with Sal. I wanna wait until we have the Ward five council person in place. We spoke last week. Now we have a person that's going to be in place, so that should go on. I want that person to be up to speed and make, be able to make it to.
You know that's gonna be when I come up here next time.
Right.
Yeah, no, I'm just pointing that, you know, it's like the podium's off.
So so we could either put that on the agenda for the next meeting or put that on at beginning of January.
Probably the beginning of January to give them time to come up to speed.
So next meeting, so hold off the next meeting, Alan.
Okay.
We'll go for the January. It'll be on the agenda.
Uh, I could though, just for a comment, I would recommend that we have it, something prepped for enabling legislation. I can kind of be working behind the scenes for timing these issues.
Okay.
I see Mrs. Serper on a regular basis now up at the State House and I'll see her Wednesday, next Wednesday, the fourteenth. Anyway, uh, Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Reed stole some of my thunder with regard to open fires. We're looking for something. Uh, I know the fire department is very diligent about people having fires in their backyard. If they're not in a fireplace with the cover over and everything else, you know, maybe they should go down there with one of those old fashioned extinguishers you carry and uh squirt it down. But that is a violation, in my opinion, and needs to be addressed. Uh, Mr. O'Connell covered flat top. I have a neighbor who mentioned to me, not only are there people there. But I guess there was an old foundation sort of towards the back and somebody actually put a roof over it. He, my neighbor mentioned that there's like a porch on it. He said, it's pretty nice. I follow things that are going on in Italy and they call that abusive construction. So uh, why aren't we taking issue with that? It's town property. It's abusive construction. Something needs to be done. See, I'm being very nice.
Oh, man, just taking note on that.
Okay, and uh. With the Payon Street property, not only Payon Street being covered in the executive session tonight. But we've also had several items that seem to require uh legal counsel. Not on the part of Mr. DeFiori because that's not his bailiwick in this area. But for the executive session, for some of the other issues, and I see a seat there that's vacant.
So he will be on executive session with us. He is sick and we don't want him here.
Okay, why didn't we just get a substitute? We, in the past, when the solicitor was missing, we've had a substitute there. And that's when we had Inman Torgi and Mr. Williamson was in there, we had somebody involved and I'm just looking at an empty seat. But he's probably being paid for that empty seat or that's under a retainer. And last but not least, uh, with regard to the stop sign on Brookside Avenue. Or should I say the hit and run on Brookside Avenue? Has anyone been arrested? That bicyclist was hit. The vehicle continued and you know, I mean, to me, that's blatant, okay? And if it was me, I'd have, and I was a young lady, I'd be contacting Jim Hummel. I'm very familiar with him and if you wanna speak with him, you can let it go till the next meeting and see how issues are resolved. But that's a hit and run and I guess hit and runs are now okay in West Warwick. Because the video's there. I don't know how many. You seem to know what it involved. Uh.
She had the video with us last time she was here. I saw the video and.
Do you refer to the police department as a hit and run? No, no, not you, him.
I don't have possession of the video, Alan.
Uh.
So to me, I am sure the bicyclist or somebody called the police department. But again, as a council, when do we have the right to start saying, I'm gonna report a hit and run? When somebody brought it up to the council and showed us that this is what happened a day after the council.
And you weren't concerned that someone was hit and running West Warwick and say, hey, chief, could you look at it? Yes, I, I was sitting there.
All right, my fault. Chief, I'll call you next time I hear a hit and run.
How about this time?
So I.
Oh, my God!
Alan, I didn't even ask her if she reported it. I didn't even know. She showed me the video. So I'm supposed to say, did you call the police? Did you do this? She wasn't even part of the, she wasn't even part of the accident. I don't even know if the car called the police, if the bicyclist called the police. I don't know the whole situation.
Prior planning prevents poor performance.
Quote.
Exactly.
I I am prior.
This is the way we do business in West Warwick. You see.
Excuse me, I'm gonna try and maintain.
I, point of order, I have the microphone.
I'm the.
Gavel me down.
Okay, Mr. Palazzo, have a good night.
No, no, you can speak. Okay, you're done talking. Now I can continue. My point is, you had a blatant incident of hit and run that was presented to this council. And it's business as usual. All you had to do is, could you send this to me? And I'll leave it at that. Don't look at me like that, Mrs. Williamson.
You know what? Did you report it to the police? You saw it.
I just saw it. I just saw it now. She was coming up here.
So did I, Mr. Palazzo, for the very first time. So if you'd like to report, fine.
You're involved. Mr. Goslin saw it at the last meeting. At least that's what he just said.
After the meeting, it was all said and done. Nobody was here. She showed us the video.
And it was, it didn't concern you. That's what I'm saying. This is business as usual in West Warwick and that's all I'm gonna say.
So we have, we have one, which is Dr. Black. I think he has plenty of common sense. And then the second one that we have to, uh, required by the state has to have an engineering, construction background.
Architectural.
Architectural background.
Building, yes. Knox, hard knocks. We, we hope that people participate. That, that will be. Absolutely. Hosted and open meetings, yes.
You love to apply.
Yes.
Evening, Paul Villa, fifteen Janet Drive. Just a couple of comments. I heard a lot of talk here when we were talking about the building committee, that Ride says this and Ride says that and Ride controls the issue. Any idea if they're writing a check?
Eighty percent.
Okay, good.
Yes. So, so yes.
Right now, we have.
At least sixty-seven percent and maybe eighty percent.
We have, I've been asking that question for about eight months.
Yeah.
We have executive branches of government throughout this country and this state who are ignoring law and leaving borders open, and we're getting inundated with students throughout the country. And so the people who are ignoring the law should be writing the checks. And so we should go ask the federal government some money too, because they're the ones who are causing the issue right now. Okay? So it's good that they're writing, they're writing the check because on top of it all, the state is taking away a lot of individual rights from the cities and towns. And I sat last night as a planning board member and listened to the synopsis of what's going to happen with the zoning stuff. And, and it's, it's horrendous. It's horrendous. There, there are, one paragraph says one thing, a few paragraphs down, it contradicts what the first paragraph says. So they have to go back in January, apparently, to talk it over because there's so many issues with it. But yet the law is going in effect January first. So it's, it's basically going to take away a lot of the zoning, as Al said, from a lot of the cities and towns. We're going to be stuck with whatever the state decides we're stuck with. So we, we should really keep our eyes open on this because the taxpayers could be left hold on a lot of the bag as well. So just a little, you know.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I just want to make one last public comment. We have partnered with Matthew's Wish for a toy drive here at Town Hall. And thank you to everyone who has contributed so far. I really appreciate it. We are going to be doing a convoy tomorrow between the fire department, the police department and DPW to bring toys to Matthew's Wish around ten AM. It should be a few vehicles. So if you hear some noise, everything's okay in town. It's a good thing. But we're hoping that this just brings awareness to this project and that maybe we can get even more involvement for next year.
Actually, Sarah, would you give them the brief synopsis that you gave me of what Matthew's Wish is?
So.
And maybe into the mic? Sorry.
Matthew's Wish started probably, probably six years ago now. Matthew was a very special boy and his parents had asked him what he wanted for Christmas. And the only thing he asked for was a toy drive for less fortunate kids. And it started off small and it's exploded. They they're very big in the southern end of the state and they are looking to help more families up this end of the state. So they have partnered with Christmas Blessings to do some drives. And that's where we'll be donating the toys so they stay local here in West Warwick.
Thank you, Sarah.
Christmas blessing.